I want to call the meeting to order at this time, and at this time I'll turn it over to Mr. Pegg.
Good evening and welcome everybody to October's work session. At this time, I'm gonna start with Mrs. Beazamp, total coordinator, elementary supervisor, Mrs. Beazamp.
Hi there, good evening. Just wanna keep the board informed, through the board can see that we are adhering to our beginning of year assessments for our elementary students. So it's important, not necessarily because of the state assessment, but for us for instructional purposes, so that the teachers get an idea of baseline standards of students with regard to just skills and not necessarily our state assessment, so we find this to be very important. Within my board, the board I do want to mention, I'm asking, requesting the board give me some advice, suggestions, understand, we wanted to examine at the elementary level, perhaps pushing back the kindergarten birthday to June 1st, as opposed to September 1st to start kindergarten. We have made a decision, we didn't use it all on that. We have done some preliminary research and just in conversation with our elementary principals and looking at retention rate at kindergarten level, it might be something that this district should consider. A neighboring district has done it, I spoke to administrator in that district and saw what went into the process as such, and again, they're kind of like we are with some of their retention numbers. And again, it's something that we definitely have to make a new one, but I do want the board to be aware that there probably will be some discussions about that and some more research, looking at some data before we make that decision or continue to decision or anything. So that's basically all I have for the evening. You know, open to tuning in, hoping you might all have or any input that the public may respond to that inquiry.
Anybody who's in the board having questions for Mrs. Beazamp?
Mrs. Beazamp, do you have any information on a percentage of kindergarten students that attend one of the various preschool programs, whether it be early Head Start, Head Start, or some of the private ones, before they enter our kindergarten program?
It's funny you should ask, I did reach out to Head Start. Well, first of all, my concern was two things, number one, if that kindergarten date would change, would the Head Starts be able to hold back those kids, would they have spots for those students? And yes, they would, they were sending them because they are of age and we're taking them. If we weren't taking them, then they could leave them, is what was reported to me. Also, in a preliminary, like I said, speaking with Head Starts right now, the numbers are quite high already in October for students that they have identified as in need of extra services already. So that's an indicator that something that we need to consider for students, would another year benefit them receiving those services rather than just being identified, until they get around to getting this which formally assessed. You know, time is ticking and that's no one's fault, that's just the process. But again, would those students technically be receiving a full year of those services before we send them along for the next, you know, right passage? When we do our kindergarten assessment, although it's just a basic assessment, to get through the number of students that we have on our registration days, you know, our performances with just a basic skills test, identifying shapes, having a student maybe identify a number or a letter that they might recognize, or perhaps even recognizing the first letter of their name or first name, some of the skills we find to be lacking, and that's not anything, they come to school to learn those skills. You can't expect them to know everything when they come to kindergarten. But again, there's a little bit of a disconnect between what standards are for kindergarten and what, you know, what we're able to provide them at that young age. Sometimes it just requires maturity, and I will say that I believe that in the past, one of the reasons that kindergarten date was set to what it was was because that we felt that although they may be unprepared, put them in kindergarten and we'll do our best with providing the education that, you know, they're going to need for the requirements of first grade. But we're finding that there's just a lot of other circumstances involved some of our students within student age. And so, you know, in looking at the data that we have, we're finding that and it's just not a statement that is across the board. But we noticed that a lot of the June, July, August babies tend to have some of those deficits and skills, you know, so they're quite young. And to be thrust into school, they might benefit from another year of a preschool program, or a private preschool. Again, I don't want anybody to hear this and take this and say, well, my, you know, my child was an August baby, they're doing fine, and they're improving. And that's, that could be the case, but again, it is something to consider. And it must be something to consider, and that, you know, a neighborhood school visitor could have phoned and said that they did it, and they're hoping that, you know, they'll see the results. You might wanna wait one more year and see how that panned out for them and use them as our basic resource. They do know that other districts in the county area too also tend to have that pushback that day.
Would testing be available for those particular students who are advanced, who are appropriate?
And I, and I was just getting that, yes, we would still, we'd never shut that option down. We would have school, so if those parents could say, hey, I really believe my child's ready, absolutely, we don't want to hold anybody back. And that option would be an available option for those parents too. So again, this is nothing more than exploratory, making you aware this way the discussions start, we'll get out, and then, you know, the riddle wheel starts. So I'm saying it right here, right now, it is only an exploratory level right now, and we have a big call on this, and again, you're welcome for input or any concerns that someone might have.
What about the premise that two years in kindergarten may be better than maybe the child being at preschool, but they're not getting what they need?
And again, we have that, we have one elementary school where there's a high number of students that have been retained currently and they are in kindergarten class. And we are seeing that some of those students are benefiting. And again, in another state, I noticed that they have been transitioning kindergarten. And there's different ways you can package this. And because we are, and that's obviously a good point, so that's something else that we would consider in making this decision. You always have to have, like, a safety net, where you can just put your high flyers for the kids that might benefit for another year. I only, I always say this, though, that we would be looking at then probably having more kindergartens in our schools, more staff involved too.
I personally, both of my boys were reading kindergarten and I, and I, and they were age appropriate, but I went in with some what I thought was really good advice, that two years of kindergarten was better than a year in preschool where they're not getting something. So I understand that a lot of parents are reluctant to hold their kids back, but, but I mean, it really worked well for my boys, so that's why I went out there.
And I do, and I do agree, I think most of our elementary administrators would agree also, if you're going to do the retention, it's best going academically, but eventually for the kids. You know, they're not really aware, move on help after or whatever. So it's best to do that K-1, 2 before it hits them later. And then it becomes a social issue maybe. But again, you're exactly right, it wouldn't hurt them. And, you know, I think it would hurt a lot of parents, this is what I'm also thinking. I wanna just make sure that if we did decide to do this, and would we have a place for those kids, would we be sure that they would have a position in another facility, or would a parent be able to afford to do another year of their private daycare?
Is the biggest concern that I'm here right now is that it's the concerns, the retention rate through the school, and what practical ramifications does that have on the district? I mean, is that, is that the ultimate concern here?
I wouldn't say that's the ultimate, I think it's more, I'm looking at from the point of parent, what are we doing families too? You know, is it really hurting us to have these kids and having them repeat? It really isn't, I see that if the trend, and again, if they keep raising the bar, that trend is trying to catch up too. And it would be, I wouldn't say that's the ultimate, I mean, we do without doubt what we need to do for the kids. You know, the bits to bring on a class size reduction or teacher, we have done it, as demonstrated in our minutes, we bring on people, we find a way. So I wouldn't say that's it, I just wanna make sure that we're doing right by the child because it's so important, those are the basic skills. And I just wanna make sure that we're not, that the standards that we're following are not way out of line, I wanna make sure that we are doing standards based, we aren't doing anything more than what is required for them to be successful. But we are going to, I'm fortunate enough to support, well, I don't wanna say that, in the process of submitting a grant through United Way, and it will target two specific schools, which we can discuss one after. The two specific schools where I'm going to try to operate Kinder Camp, which would be a free day fair for students in specific areas that have been identified, and other children would be invited. Those students would have to be drawn to the service, and then I can slide in after I get those schools to replace their rosters and spaces that are available. It's not everybody's gonna take advantage of it. And I think through this grant, I'm able to budget two teachers per building, in those two buildings and a van. Transportation tends to be an issue where people don't go. So that might be something then that we have to look at. I'm unable to do it though because it's a grant, and they're very receptive to it, they're very excited about it. Other districts have other needs of using this money, I just approached the director and he was like, this is a great idea, let's try to go for it. So we organized for that, which would be following right after kindergarten registrations, to be more fresh, and we're not gonna where they're going to school. You know, these days summer doesn't pass, get them, give them what they can maybe work on with their toddler for the summer, and let's see how that. And just dispose the child to school, and what it's like coming to school. So that's another option we are exploring. But that's the mindset right now, I know there's a lot of things on our plate regards to the district, and I might seem minor, but it is, and it's very important. So I just thought you guys need to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Okay, I'm gonna move to Mr. Hutchinson, secondary.
Progress reports were a success at the high school, so those went out. The Act 44 coordinator that I was assigned to, we did do the first step, which is naming someone. Next, we have a survey that goes out, and then we go to, which is currently, we're looking into Safe to Say Something, which is a hotline and anonymous tip line that all districts in Pennsylvania are going to, so we just filled that out. The middle school and high school, I was approached by Boosters, they would like to start a booster organization in the middle school and high school for cross-country. If anyone would like to go over, I have the bylaws here. I did talk to Mr. Price about going over to the board, I just wanna make you aware that they are looking to start a boosters organization. Also along those lines, the middle schools, Mr. Dillo and Mr. Plisco asked me about starting an NHS at the middle schools, which we currently do not have. National Arts Society, which I said we would explore, we'd like all of you to be aware of that. The same criteria would stay true as the high school. I attended a homeless coalition on October 2nd, although Albert Galatin had their audit last year, at the end of the year, it is coming, that is one of the things the state of Pennsylvania are concentrating on because of the number of homeless children throughout the schools. We were one of the, I think we were the first one in the state of Pennsylvania, but they are targeting 30 more districts for this year, hoping to get 30 to 50 this year. We were awarded $25,000 through the Safe Schools Grant, which we did receive $25,000 for that. And I just submitted the PCCD grant, which is offering another $25,000 for the PCCD grant. Also, currently writing a grant for the middle school and elementary schools, which is a project lead the way, which would funnel into the high school grant, which is the engineering possibility.
Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Mr. DuPont, I know, I'm gonna bring you up next, but I think you and Mr. Hutchinson have to give to the senior night for soccer, and so, Mr. DuPont?
All right, just finishing up fall sports, we have girls' sports and soccer down there on senior night tonight, plus a middle school game being played down there. Field's holding up great under the circumstances. Talked to our project manager, Phil Turp, he was off for bottom rung, he had some health issues, but we should be receiving our new field group right here within the next couple of weeks. Volleyball, they're gonna make the playoffs for the second, for the second time in school history, so that's very positive. Our winter sports season's gonna start on November 16th, that's pretty much it. I know Mr. Dendo wanted to speak concerning the state of our football program, some issues that we need to address here once the season is over, so should I let him go ahead and speak?
Yes, Mr. Dendo, I met with Mr. Dendo and Mr. DuPont, Mr. Dillo last week in regards to our high school being 5A with football, and they had been looking and getting some information on options to possibly, for football next year, to look at another option versus staying with the schedule we received from the WPIL. So with that being said, Mr. Dendo, would you like to elaborate to the board? We just kinda had that thought.
Basically, what we can do is drop out of the WPIL as, just as a football program, and look at the independent grant. What that would do is let us create our own schedule with teams that are available outside of the WPIL. On the front, there's already a tentative schedule that, I give up. I've been looking at other high schools for, I didn't think we'd be able to play many home games this coming year, but we actually have five teams that have taken, come to us and play, so this would kind of even the playing surface for us, because this year's been pretty rough, so we're kinda outmatched by some of these teams and schools we're playing. This would allow us to kind of pick teams that we feel we can compete against, and we help bring some around, active football program, just for the day we use the program.
Absolutely. Can we get back in the WPIL?
What's that, can we get back into the WPIL next year? Not, not, they go every two years, they re-draft.
This is the second year of this one up.
We go one and then possibly look back and then go on back into it, but...
Do they vote on it, or do we ask?
So we have to submit in writing that we would like to pull out the football only, and then once you prove that you can schedule during the games, you would have to submit in writing that we would like to get back into it, you know, for football. And they would, they're not gonna deny us.
Who would assume our enrollment is at that time?
Right, right.
We didn't see where, yeah, in case they tried to put us back, you know what I mean? I don't know, I don't know how they would...
Drew, where's this Ford Hill in there?
Ford Hill, and all these schools were in a radius of less than an hour, 45 minutes away. We had a game at Armstrong this year, that was two hours, so, I mean, it's, they're all reasonable drops and due from, so...
Drew and I and Wayne and Mr. Dillo talked last week, you know, they did mention the goal, we need to get back into WPIL with football in a few years. You know, this might be, you know, a wise move for us to build a program to give them two or three years and then try to get back into the WPIL at that time. But I think that would be a goal, is we can get back into WPIL with football.
I quite frankly don't think that the WPIL's done us any favors at all.
I agree.
In fact, it seems like we're being punished, and that may be too strong of a term, but whenever we're putting our student athletes on the road for two hours to get to a football game, and we're playing in a 5A category, it's totally, totally...
I'm absolutely...
Yeah, I'm absolutely, and the WPIL had to be aware of that.
Essentially, we got...
It cares nothing at all.
Yeah.
Well, my concern is the safety issue, I mean, where the teams that we've been playing, how they are ranked compared to us, I'm not worried.
Our problem is, we're just over the minimum of being 5A, but they're scored to 5A for just a attempt to cut off on the top side, which is probably a quality kid is in, Wayne?
Yeah.
We're between 5A and 6A now, but we're probably on the top side of that cutoff.
I believe this is a great idea, I've suggested this for a long time.
Actually, Albert Galatin's not unique to this, I've heard other schools that have questioned their membership in the WPIL with football, so I think this might be a trend.
We should have done that a long time ago.
This is essentially how Pitts Park City Schools started their life, I'm not correct, I'm not mistaken, this is how they started there.
And you're gonna eventually, if this would happen, and you're gonna get to, you're gonna get more or maybe more.
I feel we are the first ones to take this one, I think more will follow, and end up bleeding to something bigger than this.
Is there, is there any negative, is there something that the WPIL is providing us that we're gonna lose?
I don't think so.
I mean, fishing, we'll have to try to get our own officials probably, but there's assignments out there that we would deal with to get them, I'm sure.
And we're paying for the same regardless?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Dendo or Mr. DuPont?
Ideally, what would be a good scenario is once somebody else come onboard from within our county, because if you look around, nobody's winning in bad county.
Right.
Ideally, it'd be nice if you end up with almost a county league, and put some of these other coaches in there.
Like I said, I feel if we did it possible, we found maybe this route, it just, you never know, so...
I think it's a good move.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Dendo.
Wayne, do you need a date from the board in order to notify the WPIL for retention?
Yeah, if you could make the decision probably next month, that would be perfect. I have to submit a writing by January 1st.
We want to put only a janitor Wednesday night?
I'm for all, I want to be off by 10:00, because everyone else down there...
Okay, so we do only janitor Wednesday. Okay, Mr. Cheslaw?
Good evening, I handed out the statement, I got, finally got a price from another contracting for the piping issue at the high school, we revised this secondary route of running this.
Excuse me, Mr. Chesaw, let me request your memory what it's about. The room downstairs, this, the room, the German room?
Yes, sir.
And the water bubble close to the auditorium where we talked about where the water's coming out of that box. So, go ahead, Bill, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right, thank you, sir. We revised the different plan of attack, instead of replacing the complete two conduits. It is digging up outside, jackhammering the concrete up, and installing pool boxes, we'll have to install some new wiring there at that point, but taking the route of the wiring up above the ceiling, coming in and back down and tying into the existing conduits, this way the water will not be able to rise up and get into the building, then we would seal off the building at that point. I asked him for a price on it, you can see the price here, it's $26,500, which means I would have to bid the, bid the project and everything, but I was asked to find some numbers again, and I did. Also, in my bid, in my fourth packet, I had been able to replace the south air conditioner in room 2821, combustion supply does mostly all of our work on this type of stuff. The unit has burned a compressor, so it's not able to be used, we'd have to flush the system in those two units, so for $8,475, they would replace this tradition split unit. And then for the stage grading at the high school, I've finally got Pittsburgh Stage to give me the rest of the price, to replace the rest of the entire stage grading at a price of $53,141.
Are there performance, are there performance bonds with any of this work that you've talked about?
If we do the bid project, we will, and probably also the stage grading, we would have to do that. Am I correct, Mr. Price?
That's correct.
Yes.
In other words, whether it is a co-stars, for example, I'll piggyback block of purchase bid, or whether it's a sealed bid, these are levels where you have that preference.
And Pittsburgh Stage is a...
My comment was simply because of the problem that we have with the floor in the high school.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chesaw, with the stage area, I appreciate you trying to get it going. However, I would like to have Mr. Mankus and Mr. Plisco and Mrs. Sorrello, I'd like to have them go over it, I think they should be a part of it to make sure that everything, we're spending a lot of money here on the stage area, and I think they need to have, we need to have their input to make sure what we're changing for them is what, you know...
We're not really changing much, Mr. Mankus was involved with this back, way back when, maybe two years ago when we started this, and then it went by the wayside, and we got the $80,000 project number. So we went off of that exact same plan that Toby and Pittsburgh Stage worked on.
Well, I would still feel more comfortable if he saw exactly this, he and Mr. Plisco. I would like to have them take a look at it before we're voting on it, if that's all right for everyone else. But I appreciate, I appreciate you not forgetting about the stage area.
Any questions for Mr. Chesaw?
Just real quick, the project at the high school, I can see in my bid and my board packet, there's not a bid or an estimate in our packet for that, is there?
For what, the high school piping project?
Yeah.
No, ma'am, because you asked me last month, and this is the fastest thing I've ever...
I just wanted to make, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
They'll all have to come up with a scope of work and everything and stuff and bid it out because it is above the $19,500.
Okay, so when you got those numbers, it was just a verbal?
Verbal bid, we went out and looked at it, we tried to find another plan of attack, because the other attack that we was looking at was up in the $150,000 to $200,000 range, digging up and changing everything. And I said, we gotta come up with a different way if we can save money, plus get this efficiently done.
Thank you.
Bill, that cutoff is now $20,100. It'll probably go higher starting January 1st, in terms of whatever your timeline...
I might be able to beat them up on that one.
I would like to add that the room there, the computer lab on the other side is leaking pretty bad too, on the other side of the stairwell coming down. So when they get into it, I don't know, if they're gonna do the left side, I don't know if it'll...
Well, that's a foundation leak there.
On the right side, it's getting bad too. So it's both rooms coming down, the entrance to the auditorium.
On both sides of the stairs, yes.
Yes, this classroom, and then on the other side of the stairwell is a computer lab, but it's coming down the wall pretty good, more so than it has in the past.
Through a, through a electrical box?
No, it's not through an electrical box, straight down through the wall, yep.
Is it moisture, or is it running water?
It's running water, it depends, I went down there the other day after all that rain, not, dries bone.
These leaks are phenomenal.
I don't know, I, you know, it's...
It could be pouring down rain and no water at all, show up, and it can sprinkle for two minutes and they'll, they'll run for a bucket full.
Same with the classroom, it could sprinkle, and find drippy water.
One other thing too, I do have the guys starting, they started this evening on installing the door lockdown, jam bolt doors for all the classes. Paul and Mike started at the high school, and Jimmy and Keith started at the north. The plans are to get those all installed by December, if you ask us to make it. The plans are to get those all installed by December, if you ask us to make it.
You have a question, Mrs. Prince?
Yes, I just wanted to know more about this generator problem that I really need to know.
Listen, the generator problem is a life safety issue. I've been calling Palko, called him to try to get someone out to take a look at it. We found water in the oil, which either means the blocks cracked, the heads climbed, or the oil cord is run. The gentleman came out to assess it, he cannot assess it to where it's at and the way it's at, because he has to tear the motor down, he can't tear it down where it's at. I asked him to give me pricing on bringing in a temporary generator because it is life safety, without it, we have to close the school. They brought one in Friday, we got it hooked up. I put the cart before the horse a little bit on this one because it is life safety and I have to get it in there. If we have an issue, you know, the state's going to have us on that.
Being that it's life safety, do we have a maintenance schedule on these type of?
Yes, I have a maintenance schedule on these generators every summer, plus my own guys do oil changes, water checks, stuff like that, and then I have Palko come out and go through the entire district, check every generator we have.
How old is this generator?
That generator's probably from the renovation for like 20 years, I figure. Palko is the original installer of the generator also, so it's their unit.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow? Okay, I'm going to jump back, I know the people who went first, they had to go to the high school, and Mr. Hutchinson and Mr. Dupont have to leave for a procedure night. I think we have a few people here for public forum, so I'm going to jump to public forums. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in a public forum? If you could come up and just give us your name and address?
An address? Sydney, North Park, Eastwood Elementary. My concern is there was a soft lockdown at Smithville Elementary today, and my daughter and I texted me and I said, no, I didn't know anything about it, and then after, you know, we disconnected, I was thinking about it, and I thought, well, my granddaughter's in first grade and she's at one of the trailers, and they would bring those children in. Well, the more I worry about it, I called and was told, no, they don't bring the kids in for soft lockdown. I know what the difference is between soft and hard, but I feel there's 10 first graders in the trailer, they could easily be brought into the school if the police give you a caution that, you know, go to a soft lockdown, why can't we take the caution to bring these into a main school? That's my concern. And I talked to you earlier, you said, well, that was their policy for soft, you'd have to talk to the safety committee, and I thought, well, I'm coming to address the board to see why can't we wear on the side a caution, bring them safely into the school until the lockdown is over? These are six-year-olds. I don't think that's unreasonable. Now, that's my, what I'm here for.
And it's only concerned by 10 kids, I guess.
I don't care if it's 10 or if it's one. I don't care, you know, if you have, you don't have them to go out on the playground, you're locked down inside the school, you go about your own activities, they need to come into a main building when they're safe. They're in a trailer outside, and there's no way that the police can say, if they feel that they have to, to give you a caution to go to a soft lockdown, then I think we can go to the caution to bring our kids into the main building. And I would like somebody to address it.
Well, the police actually did notify us. We had to call the police to see if there was something going on because somebody called the school because assault police up in Smithville near the post office. So I did have Chief Balacki call the state police, and they said there's no, nothing to be concerned with, they were serving a warrant for someone in that area, and that the school's safe. But Mrs. Rosie not knowing what was going on, the police, they, you know, not part of the school, the post office had, did a go on a soft lockdown, notified central office, and I'm after the Chief Balacki to find out what was going on. They said it's safe, it's under control, there's no concern. We just kept the soft lockdown for about an hour, the police just, you know, just left the area to make sure there wasn't any concerns. You know, it's simply a soft lockdown, we're on high alert, there's nothing happening here at the school, but there's something that the police could do. You know, had it been a situation where there would have been danger, if the police would have called us and told us that, most definitely Mrs. Rosie would have had her students out of the trailers brought into the main school. But this is something that we will talk about with our safety committees. Each school has a safety committee, it needs monthly, but this is something that we can certainly and will definitely revisit to make sure, you know, should we bring them in in that situation. And sometimes, you know, like with the hours training that we can have throughout the district, you know, the situation depends on what you should do and if you have time to make a critical decision. If there's something close to the school and if it would put the kids in harm's way, to take them out of the trailer, go outside into the school, that might not be the best thing to do depending on the situation.
Yeah, but I, we are erring inside of caution. Well, we're doing all this training in the schools for lockdown. These are trailers outside, there's no bathroom, there's nowhere for these kids to go, they can't go to a closet or anything else, and it's fine, we can all say this is just, it's a precaution, but why can't we have a precaution for our children to be more safe inside a main building? I don't think that's too much to ask.
I agree with you. We'll definitely talk to our safety committees and discuss it and see what would be best. And I'm not saying we're wrong, and I'm not saying it's set in stone. We certainly will discuss it at Smithville Elementary. I don't believe, you know, other schools I don't think have a trailer, but we do have kids outside for phys ed, and we do drills where it's like a reverse evacuation. If we were to something happen, we do take the kids from their football field or the playground insides, put it as possible, but certainly it's well noted and I promise you we will discuss it and see what is best viewed in those situations.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
So the way it is right now, each individual school has its own safety committee, so there's the potential that there's major differences between how each elementary school would handle this situation?
Well, right, every school has its own safety committee, we have one district-wide that needs much of it as well.
Basically, I think what she's trying to say is we do the same procedure to all schools?
Yes, but the lockdowns, yes, it's the same procedure district-wide. Like I say, they might discuss issues that are pertinent to that building. You have a question, yes, we have some questions. Yes.
Principal, if there was a soft lockdown and you had students outside for recess or phys ed, would they remain outside for phys ed or recess or during a soft lockdown? Would you bring them back into the building?
During a soft lockdown, they would come inside, however, during that time, if we are teaching, teaching continues.
Yes, I understand that.
It's a fair question.
Yeah, but they would not remain outside, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's a, the seizure would go for all schools, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct.
You got it, right.
And that's part of what Mr. Hutchinson's recently been assigned with the school district safety and security administrator, working with Chief Balacki and myself, that we have consistency throughout the district, and we'll be revisiting all these things with this Act 44 that's recently been handed out through the Presidencies Department of Defense. So those things will be revisited, our crisis and all hazards handbook and all those things will need to be revisited, threat assessments that will need to be done. So this is all part of what is the Act 44 with Mr. Hutchinson and what the Chief Balacki and myself. Thank you, Sydney, I appreciate you bringing up our attention, and it will be discussed and we will get to it as well. Was there anybody else here for public forum seeking? Could you please come up and state your name and address, please?
My name is Kent Williams. I'm here to talk about baseball. First of all, has the coaching job been decided?
What makes it?
That will be decided this month. This Wednesday night's meeting is the voting meeting.
Okay, how many candidates are there, do you know?
I don't have, I wish Dupont would have, but I know there is some on the list that we will be discussing in the executive session.
Okay. Now, last year, I was told that parents weren't allowed to coach their, if their son was playing, they weren't allowed to coach baseball, is that true? He said it would have been the, sort of the rule with the AP baseball.
If someone is a parent, they are not permitted to be a volunteer coach. We have made exceptions to the sports depending if there were any other coaches interested or not, but a volunteer coach typically is not a parent. We have paid coaches that are hired by the district that work parents that coach, but that, what you were talking about specifically with volunteer coaches.
Of course, you didn't, I mean, they're volunteering, so it's a good district money.
Is that an unwritten rule?
That's, I would say it's probably an unwritten rule, even it's kind of a practice, but we have had volunteer coaches that had a child on whatever sport that their parent's coaching, that there was nobody else to help, so we have made exceptions to that, but more often than not, if you were a parent, you would not be permitted to be a volunteer coach.
Not that, do you mind coming out there too, but I mean, I disagree with that rule. I think that if you particularly, it seems like it's just backwards. If who else but a parent is willing to step up and volunteer their time, if you have a parent who is qualified and is going to volunteer their time rather than us paying somebody, and I know, I understand that there's the potential for some abuse and a whole other set of issues as a parent, but I would like to think that we've got a lot of great parents out there that could contribute to these sports, and that's something I'd like to see changes personally.
I can't see how, how you decide, like, okay, this guy can volunteer for his son with this kid, this guy can, understand what I'm saying?
It's got to be, it's got to be a level playing field.
Mr. Williams, are you interested in the baseball coach?
Well, no, last year I was helping because there was nobody else to coach, and then they were told that I couldn't help coach because my son was playing.
On the varsity level or on football?
On the JV level.
JV level?
Yes, and the JV coach had nobody else to help him.
Why do you think that's something we need to go out?
I mean, it needs to be a level playing field.
I agree.
You can't leave so-and-so's there and not leave him, understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I agree with that.
I mean, it's just not right. And is there any talk about getting a field, baseball field?
Twenty-five years ago.
I mean, you spent $500,000 on a field for the safety of the kids, the field that they play on now, there's a safety issue. The field is a mess. And we, they almost get a lot of games, plus schools a lot of lectures from what I heard, and without getting the maximum games that we shouldn't give them.
I'm the same.
All about baseball. Baseball is...
They play full schedule.
Unless it's raining out, we don't get a game.
Unless it's raining out.
Well, we don't get a game.
Yeah, double A Patriots make those games up.
Well, we can play all the games.
I'm a big baseball man, I follow baseball.
But I think, I think baseball would...
Well, I will say that concerning the field, when we did A.L. Wilson, Mr. Howard and whoever else was on the board, we had all planned intentions because we have a lot of acreage there, and Mr. Paul Backhew, you know, he had every intention of trying to get a baseball field. None of us like not having our acreage out and out. However, things just happened that, I think we lost, the funding was taken away, we lost our teachers and what have you, but it would be our, one of our wishes to have our field here, and there's a lot of acreage.
We had studies about a base school, there's no possible way it could fit anywhere over there, with the creeks and these things running through. So when we bought the A.L. Wilson, we had plans on doing that, but it's just, that's when the findings started going.
How about soft, I mean, it's...
We got things at German Park that needs to look at too, so if you want to bring in soft, let's look down at German Township Baseball Field. There's a lot of work done that the school district could do that they just went the other place, out of another place.
Right.
You know, it's not a bad...
I think they used to play there, didn't they? They used to play there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a nice field.
Yes, it is.
Nobody compared to field because the park commission, our union, I put funding on it.
So you've got a lot of parents that would be willing to step up and help take care of the field.
You run into a problem there, because like out here, if it's still here, union people have to take care of this field, the softball field.
Softball field is correct.
So you could run into a problem there.
And you know, in Mason Town, you have, it's German Mason Town Park, you have the Fayette County Commissioners, then you have a Mason Town Park Commission, it's just...
Yeah, it's just...
What about looking at the field, get, a lot of questions from people here, they always say the field doesn't matter.
Not big, that's nobody's field, that's not big.
There's two fields still.
There's no place in soft for a field that's big for a high school. You need a center field that's 390, 400 feet. You need a 5A level, 4A level, you need a field, not a sandlot. But our problem is property right now, if we can find this property, that even somebody donating a gift is a way to start a project.
We have the property at A.L. Wilson.
A.L. Wilson, that's one reason why we did, because we wanted to put cross country and track around the baseball field. We had had plans, but money wasn't there.
But how did we pull off $380,000 to put a football field in if the money wasn't there?
Because of a safety issue, ma'am.
Yeah.
There's a safety issue with our baseball players too.
Driving, driving to a field, you know, like, they go home from two and a half to drive to a field away from the school, I mean, that's not a safety issue?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I mean, that's a big safety issue, your kids are out in the roads. So if you're going to say it's a safety issue for one, again, a level playing field.
We will look into that.
I mean, the field that they play on isn't a safety issue. Yeah, I mean, you can shake your head at me, I don't care, I'm just, I'm just looking out for the kids.
Yeah, we will, we will look into it.
I respect you. I respect. I mean, right along, you take them right along, right along, you put right back there two blocks, and we have a field on there that we play on, it's a mess, and then the kids have it to travel. That's a safety issue. Football players, they get right out the door, they give them, and they go home. Baseball players, they go home, they don't even get a chance because they got to drive 10 miles to a field. I mean, that's not a safety issue?
We have explored, like I said, to try to get it around the high school, because I think that would be ideal. There's a creek behind the football field and you can't reroute that because of environmental problems.
You're protecting them?
Excuse me?
Did you say the fair?
Yes, oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it couldn't be a pipe and it just stay on the field?
They wouldn't notice do it, did the R.D. teach that?
Oh, yeah.
But we have explored all of this, you know...
We would like nothing more to have our own baseball field out of Dallas.
I mean, you know, I mean, how many softball fields are there and the baseball has nothing?
And you have Mr. Dunham here, he's a very, much of an advocate of baseball, and he's for the best out of the worst.
I think last year there was like 40-some kids playing baseball, 44 kids. They took this there, it's keeping, I mean, it's keeping them busy, they're not out, you know what I mean?
We totally understand.
And then it's just the safety game. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Is there anybody else for public forum?
I would like to, Mr. Dendel.
Want to state your name and address?
My name's Joe Barton, my address is 10653 Drive, Smithville, PA. My concern is just, I was part of the baseball program, I was very fortunate that Coach Popovich had me on the staff. Worked with the kids, felt like we had a great season. Myrtle Beach, we went down, was very grateful to the board and the boosters and everybody that was together, a lot about to happen. It was a great experience for those young men. It was a great experience for those young men. We'll be good down there as a day team and pretty much put a winning record together at the J D level. We go into our regular season, we go nine and six, we have another good season. Help with the softball. We go to ten, three, and one, we have another good season. I'm just talking because my concern is that I'm not going to be asked back to be part of the coaching staff. I'm not sure how the hiring process works, but I'm just, with my opinion, that I wish that maybe even the J D coach had an opportunity to apply instead of being hired on by a head coach. I understand that the head coach hires, and he hires the staff. But sometimes I just think that even the J D level, those guys need to be treated equally as the varsity guys. And that those guys developing is what makes our varsity team better. And I just want to state my concerns. I'd like to be part of that. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if I'm going to be asked back. The other thing that the guys are talking about with the fields, I invested in property in Fairbanks, twenty acres across from A L Wilson. I don't know if anybody knows, but I'm opening a baseball and softball facility called Extra Engrants, which is going to be here for our area. Unfortunately, I can't do it in this area because of land issues like you guys have. So I totally understand. I do, I am having a meeting with K Two Engineering tomorrow. I'm looking at taking the old Romeo's building over, which I know is out of our district. But goodwill that is properly behind it is also willing to work with us on building complexes. I'm just coming to the board that there's a possibility that if I help develop a field in an area, can we be out of district? With, so Albert Galloway has a field. Is that, I mean, I know it's a, it's a travel thing again, but if there's a way we can fuss and, and get people there, I feel in about a year, two years, we could have a nice wood-filled cut field, which I've worked with K Two, and I have it drawn and done. Everything's engineered. I just, you know, if I pursue forward, I'm, I'm, I'm from this area. I went to Fairbanks, Texas. But, you know, I'm, I'm a local, I guess you could say, but I want these kids to have opportunities through baseball that unfortunately sometimes I don't think we give them. Or it's not that we don't give them, but our area is not garageable for people to sit in. Through my franchise, I've already dealt with some guys, and I have, we had a camp in Rochester where I think eighteen of our J D and eighteen, or eighteen J D and varsity kids all went to this Rochester camp. And they got recognized from Penn State, Cal U, St. Vincent's, Duquesne, I think there's two more colleges there. Those coaches really liked our kids. They thought we had beautiful kids. So that's, that's one thing I want to be part of this program, which is to, to help these young men get these opportunities. But just my concern is that I might not be able to get the ass back, and I just want to be part of the program.
Excuse me, can you express your concerns to Mr. Duflam?
Yes. Yes, I have sent emails and text messages. Mr. Duflam just told me this evening that he is going to settle with me and Coach Pop, just to make sure that we're all on the same basis. Because there still hasn't been a decision made yet on the coaching. But I just wanted to come up, and whatever the situation is, I just want to put my name out there as being involved in the program. If it's a head coach, if it's a head J D coach, if it's a freshman coach, I don't care. I just want to work with the kids. I also have a travel program in the area that has about a hundred kids. Redtail Baseball, we have kids from eight years old up to fifteen years old. Seventy percent of them are from Albert Galloway. So that's the, you know, I, I'm just trying to build baseball in southwestern Pennsylvania, because I know it's big. Because I, I had opportunities when I was a little man playing baseball around here, and I just want to give it back. The other thing, too, is I really wish, maybe we can consider a middle school team. Because I can tell you through my travel program, you probably got twenty kids from the eighth grade to seventh grade level that will play baseball. And I know that I can have at least, at least a fourteen-game season scheduled for that. But I'd like, I'd like to take that into consideration, too. And I'll volunteer my time to do that if I have to. I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you so much.
See, Bill, oh, I'm sorry, that, call me for him, come on up, right?
Hi, I'm Jill Dempsey. I live at fifty-eight South, working on three thirteen, in Palmestack, in the county, where the franchise is. We wanted to just, on behalf of Mr. Gordon, come up. I think he displays his commitment to the children, invited acting for once with the children. He is very committed to our, our group in softball, major baseball, and in the high school realm. I just would like, if at all possible, for Wednesday evening, that he could just be considered. I don't know the process, but I would like to put his name at least as a nomination for the parents. And we are representing other parents. This is just, Joe and I, here, speaking on behalf of the half, but if, if at all possible, I would like to nominate Joe Gordon. Anything that, if he cannot be a head coach, there's somebody who can lead him as a J D coach. Because if you would come watch a J D game, you can just tell the difference from the kids. He helped all fall with our J D students, and it was just a totally different world watching his boys play. Actually, they won. It was every single of our games until the last few. He is a excellent coach. He is excellent with the kids. The parents absolutely love him. We hate to see him win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public forum? Okay, thank you. I'm going to move to the building principles. I know Mr. Dillo and Mr. Plisco, Mr. Hutchison had mentioned about you gentlemen wanting to start a Junior National Arms Society. Do the board have any questions for Mr. Dillo or Mr. Plisco in regards to that?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's really important to recognize those kids that are giving extra effort to make good grades, possibly go out in community, do community service. And that's kind of what we're looking for, just as a reward, to be recognized at some point in time throughout the year. So I think that would be a real nice thing if you would consider that.
Does that have to be on the agenda to approve them to start the National Junior Arms Society?
Well, I, I don't know how you run your senior highs. You treat it as like a, an activity or a club? And I, and I definitely, it would surprise me if the National Arms Society requires support of schoolwork like that, nor is it part of that nationwide group. You would hurry the way, and what do you have to lose? If you have to have it, then you've got to have it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dillo or Mr. Plisco? Any questions from the board?
Do you have faculty members that would be willing to act as sponsors?
Yeah, we do. There's been several members volunteered at both schools, and Mr. Plisco and I have been in touch with. We have probably at least six or seven people.
Hey, I have the elementary school, Dr. Witt, Mrs. Rosie, and Mrs. Hott. Do you have any questions for any of the principals? Mrs. Presblewski, I believe will be here Wednesday night. She's not here this evening. And Mrs. Bay as well. Any questions for the elementary principals in attendance? Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on. Denise Sheets, financial?
Dr. Boone currently does our demo exams for students. He informs us with the hiring. So we need to find somebody new for like twenty. I just wonder how the board considers this, for example, having somebody new, you have to advertise. Any thoughts?
Is anyone here, he has practiced over?
Please, anybody else?
Yeah, I have some other things to discuss. I just wonder what we want to do. Do we want to advertise, and see if there's other, that is in the district that are a little bit...
To see the advertising cost, can we call those, the district dentors?
The cost is under a thousand dollars. From sixteen, seventeen, the total pay was nine hundred and ten dollars, and in seventeen, eighteen, it was nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, we have that much advertising.
We can call and get them, phone calls, and just see if someone's interested, versus advertising board and agreement.
We could just start a dent, start a dent kit.
Yeah.
We'll start those ones.
Can we, can we draft a letter and try to send out, like an official letter, so we can bring this to practice, we can live in the range of that way? We don't, I don't want to leave anybody out if there's somebody that could be interested.
The next item, my pass out before the meeting, it's a letter from intermediate unit one about health insurance consortium trust. Last year, they were free to share to the fund the health insurance consortium, and I believe they're more concerned going this year. And they're leaving to go to the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium. They're finding other rates there. And if they are, you realize that they need to make some changes. The letter summarizes what they want to do, and there's also an attached amendment to the trust, the current trust agreement. The consortium is contemplating making changes to the trust governance, which would involve having union representation as trustees. And the result, they are saying it would result in immediate premium savings for all participating districts. It requires approval from two-thirds of all the participating districts. They've asked us to put it on our October agenda. The deadline is December of twelfth.
Their intention is to have equal representation from management to employee, school districts, and the unions later. If they are successful in putting this together, there will be one or two plans that will apply across the board for all members of this consortium. This board, the governing board, will set the plan, and it will set the premium rate, or I should say, the cost of being in the plan, again, for the important school districts. During collective bargaining with the various unions, then, there would be no longer any negotiations over the type of plan. It would be set, it would be set by the governing body at the consortium level to apply to everybody, as well as the rates will be uniform. Right now, member districts pay different rates. Member districts have different plans. Although you're part of a bigger consortium, the idea being more numbers, better rates, fifty percent of that rate is based on all the member districts, and fifty percent is based upon your individual use factor, for lack of a better word. So what this does is, the governing body comprised of both labor and management, anytime they choose to vote, public meeting, et cetera, anytime they choose to change the plan, it is changed for everybody. Whatever rates they set are set for everybody. Districts, in terms of their own individual collective bargaining, negotiate what their individual employees pay as a premium co-pay or employee co-pay. That's, that's the ultimate goal here. And our understanding is that they feel that the equal membership of labor and management, north of us... By the way, the Allegheny County Health Consortium is more than just Allegheny County nowadays. It's, it's got members from outside the county. As well as members, although their institution is not all of the public, I mean, high secondary public school districts, too, they, well... They feel that that group has, over the years, kept their premiums and plans better than what we proposed off of the I U one. So that's why they're going, sort of going in and modeling it after that system.
Any question?
Are you, you're on the consortium health, right? You're just on the I U.
Just on the I U board. Have a question. If, if the board would approve this, this second amendment, health insurance consortium agreement, would that in any way obligate the district, Albert Galloway, to further its participation beyond the cutoff date that may be reached in our collective bargaining?
I'm not sure.
Okay, would this, if we would approve this, the I U?
Right, and if not, what are the other members doing, like?
Yeah, are we going to be stuck, thank you, in this, okay? And would it, if the cost savings that we're hoping to attain?
Yeah, we, we can't speak to it, because we don't know for sure if there is a new governing body, a new composition of a governing body, how fast they will arrive at a uniform plan or plans. There is a possibility they may try to offer two plans. For example, the Allegheny County School Health Consortium offers two plans. And you can pick whichever one you want, but again, the rates are set. I don't know for sure how fast they will react. And yes, you could end up with a new collective bargaining agreement, and then the consortium, the new consortium, although, the new board trustees, during our agreement, could unilaterally change the health plan.
Currently, where do we sit with all the other districts, compared to the other districts in this consortium? Where do we sit in terms of our costs? Compared to the other districts?
I don't know compared to other districts. Like we mentioned, we all have different plans. I believe our rate is a little higher, because we have a lot of people going to Morgan Town, and we're being told that the costs are higher down here.
As you've told us before, you believe that the Allegheny Health Consortium would, or has a possibility, strong possibility perhaps even, of saving the district money in the long run in itself here. How much is that?
All, all we can address is that, all I can tell you is, right now, if we were already in that plan, we would be saving at least nine hundred thousand dollars. I can...
So by voting yes on this, then, are we locking ourselves into this particular consortium rather than having the option to change? That we had that ongoing discussion about?
Yeah, that's, that I think could be a concern, because I don't know if the newly constituted board might, for lack of a better word, create a poison pill, you know what those are? We hear a lot of them, that make it unaffordable for you to switch. I don't know if that would hurt.
So then, then based on that, is there a recommendation that we vote no on this?
Let me say this. We did make a request for substantive information. We were hoping for tonight, but we did not receive it yet. Their goal was to have all districts vote by December one. If we hold off and wait till November to vote, hopefully we'll have some more information. Because again, I know we're looking at it from our standpoint, which is important to us considering our funding. Because again, I know we're looking at it from our standpoint, um, which is important to us considering our funding.
Could we in November, um, if the board so chose, to approve this with a condition? That, uh, it would.
You want, no, they.
They did want.
What you're, what you're voting on has to be uniform for all the districts.
Okay.
And that's the attachment to the.
Yeah, okay, I thought so.
What's the body of the, the Allegheny?
I, we, we do have numbers, but I, I would rather discuss, and we discussed collective bargaining because it's a factor for us.
Okay.
Did, did the buy-in round number of those one spread out over five to seven years?
I'm, I'm in favor of waiting till at least November, we have to do that.
Yeah, Mike, I think that would be a wise thing to do because things may also happen at our November negotiations.
Still something to ask you, please?
Um, now, I did have an I U for discussion for the natural gas. There, there's something wrong with the business managers being down at the I U about forming a consortium through I U one for natural gas. There hasn't been any further information on it, so I really don't have anything to discuss on that. Uh, I do have two other items though. And I don't know that this one requires any board action, but I just wanted to make the board aware. Chris Bowlin and I met with, um, a representative from the government, it's, it's a merchant services and processing company, uh, to accept credit card payments that would be deposited directly to our bank account. We also had Stacy from the high school come up and meet with them. And we were looking at maybe taking credit card payments for transcripts just to speed up the turnaround of the transcripts. And Chris Bowlin was to use it for the chron book insurance. Uh, the cost would be a hundred and ninety-nine dollar setup fee. And they would provide, provide, um, free cell phone devices so that if Chris is out there collecting the insurance for the chron books, there's a device he can attach to his phone to stand the credit cards. Um, the money would be deposited by nine P M. into our bank account. And if anybody goes online to do anything after that, it would be the next business day. There's an average of two point five percent transaction fee, but that would be passed on to the user. And there's, um, no contract involved. And they're also, uh, allowing us to do a free trial of the operation. So I just wanted to make you aware that we're doing that, it's a hundred and ninety-nine dollars per frame.
Not a good one, Mark, right? And it's got a lot of money, I mean, that's definitely. Still got to put up the bills, beggar.
Okay, the last slide of mine, how I passed out, um, and updated on the bond issue money and the capital project payments. I, I gave this to you all, um, I think at the Wednesday meeting last month. Uh, I did update it for the October payments. And if you look over in the bar write columns, um, now there's the bottom entry. I was asking how much money would be remaining. And I'm estimating four hundred and ten thousand. And then next to the last column, the projects that have been completed, we have the state bringing and the board grabbing. Um, there could be other projects that maybe I don't have on here, but, um, this is just giving you an overview of what we've spent and what's left this time. Mr. Pig, you've learned, mentioned the safety grant.
Yeah, Mr. Hutchinson did. We did get awarded the Save Schools Card with grant for equipment with twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and from my understanding, as long as the, that grant money gets spent in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, um, we can use that money for what we wrote in the grant, which was metal detectors, um, that we purchased. And so far, I, I want to say that we spent around eighteen thousand dollars. Um, I have to verify everything with, uh, with Deb and Kelly tomorrow. But there may be additional money out of that twenty-five thousand to purchase more metal detectors that we could utilize throughout the district. So, Mr. Hutchinson, we did, and I, we did submit the P P C D grant for another twenty-five thousand dollars of the credit for, uh, bag scanners that we purchased from the middle schools. That's why we didn't choose to purchase them yet, we wanted to see if we could get the, the money in the grant funded first. So, uh, basically.
And these two questions. Uh, on the high school turf, you have the payment, uh, that, uh, is due to be approved on Wednesday. Then you have a balance remaining of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Yes, they had, um, that, that was their final balance. That was probably their retainage on it. They had some work to finish up. And after the agenda was mailed out to you, they did submit the, um, second application for the balance due. So I wanted to talk to you about that. Do you want to go ahead and pay that this meeting? Or do you want to hold that? I can ask Twain if he's satisfied that they've completed all the work and there's nothing hanging in the balance. Do you want to go ahead and pay it? I would just have to add it to the agenda for Wednesday because we didn't receive that until the agenda was done.
Don't, don't forget they need to, um, make sure they issue all the paperwork. Like warranty papers, field broom, instructions on how to take care of the field.
We've got, we've got field broom, we get all stuff from them, so.
Yeah, I think we should hold it for a while.
Otherwise, that thirty-six thousand isn't really doing it because it can't, like.
Right, they, they sent an email.
For Wednesday's board meeting.
They sent an email maybe Thursday or Friday and asked to have it paid this meeting.
The bond proceed was two million, five hundred thousand dollars. Of that amount, we've spent approximately sixty-two thousand dollars for security. I simply would like to remind the board of the four hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and three cents that's left. I really seriously think that there are more security issues in the district that need to be addressed before the money here evaporates for use on other projects.
Well, I think it should definitely be discussed up there. I mean, it has to be on building improvements, the building projects, if you'd be setting anywhere else.
Yeah, the, the remainder, the remaining balance can only be spent on building.
And, and capital projects.
And capital projects.
But in the past, capital projects have been used for various reasons. Uh, that were capital projects, but were not perhaps what was designated when the bond issue was initiated.
So one thing.
That's my concern.
One thing that's wrong on here is the project that Mr. Ches, I was talking about earlier with the, the, the gray wire signing in, such as their well.
That, that could be part of this because it's more, I mean.
Good, good.
The firm made it to work.
But when we approved the bond issue, we specifically pointed out security, the, um, security reasons, the roof repairs that needed done, uh, the stage, uh, the, the field. We need to make sure that, okay, those issues that were addressed when the bond issue was approved are taken care of before money is spent in other areas. We don't have, and, and I'm certainly a new expert, but, uh, we need to look at the entryways to all of our buildings to make them, okay, bullet resistant. And we've done none of that yet. So there are a lot of areas for security that we need to look on. Enough said, thank you.
I agree with you, buddy. We do need to look at additional security, but I think we also need to look at human factor and how we stop all of our issues with our actuaries.
They've gotten better. I know it's been, we've monitored, Chief, I lack Ian, security of the high schools, we're monitoring, monitoring them very closely. Um, and it has gotten better. You know, they have seen on video where a student opened the door for someone, um, another student come in. You know, so those are all, they're seeing it, they're dealing with students, but I think, um, that has gotten much better. There's not many other concerns. Chief, am I correct?
We still have staff members coming in doors that aren't supposed to come in. And, you know, I, I'm thankful it's being addressed. But today, there's two staff members that I picked up over a month ago. Both came in the doors that aren't supposed to come in. So I, I, I don't know whether, you know, maybe they're told with the nurse, ignore what they're doing and what are you going to do to me, or whether they have it been addressed. But, you know, it, 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 it's like, last Friday, I had a staff member go out to the door and didn't check behind him, the door's a jar, an inch and a half down in the chip. One of my guards happened to be down there within minute and a half, two minutes after he went out, pulled around, threw the door open. He pulled it shut. When we went back to check the camera, we see the staff member, I addressed it with, with his supervisor. Okay? But then, five minutes later, I got a, another employee going down, one, a, another employee in that door because she's late or whatever, or that's her certain time. She's not one of our employees, she's an employee from somewhere else that comes to that building. But they're letting her in the door. And, and that's one of the doors that we're periodically finding a jar standing open or whatever. Yeah, I, I, I don't know what to do other than I close all the doors and then when they come in, I arrest them. I mean, that's the boss's building. But I mean, it, 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 it's like. Some people think the rules don't apply to them. And, and that's the, the attitude. I had a teacher, they sent two students out for a party there first.
And are you reporting this to the voting principal?
Oh, I'm, I'm reporting it and he's addressing it. But I don't know how well it's getting addressed.
How expensive would it need to buy, to buy a noxious door alarms for those particular doors that are.
There, there are probably a couple of files in the door because they're all double doors. Yeah. When you need time to do their renovations, they alarm their doors. And they have a panel in their security area. And when a door opens, there's an alarm going off in the area and the panel's lighting up where they know the door got opened. And they have cameras on most of the doors. We have some doors that don't have cameras on. We have some doors that we have cameras on and the cameras aren't working.
To, to piggyback on what Mr. Donovan said, is there a list of things that perhaps that, I, I don't, the two thousand dollars, you won't refer to that, that alarm system, that's more than two thousand dollars? Or the, I'm sorry.
That's, that's per door.
Per, per door. Wait, is there a, perhaps?
There's twenty-five entrances in that high school and probably pushing closer on your doors. So you're talking two hundred thousand dollars to alarm?
Has the head of our security, between, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot, but maybe between now and the November meeting, if there were a list of things that you think would be a wise use of the money for security issues, uh, that might be helpful because I, I do think there was a discussion of, you know, that we wanted to use part of this money towards security. I don't want to see the money just thrown away though.
I, I can maybe do a list. Some of the things we're waiting for involves waiting to see how that one grant comes out rather than spend our money for a bag scanner. We might get one purchased through the state, but we definitely need three more bag scanners. Okay, there's no doubt about that. And, and we're looking at, at sixty to seventy thousand dollars there.
I noticed on one of the financial sheets that there were a lot of expenditures for collateral things like tables and, and so forth. Um, are those things that could piggyback then into the capital, into this figure, into what the, you know, the capital project fund? Because they're related to that or no? No, okay. I mean, there was, there were several items on the financial sheet this year, this, this month that were secondary things for the bag scanners and metal detectors. So, I mean, what, so what we're spending on security is really a good bit more than what we're seeing on the sheet.
Yes.
Principals, how many of you guys have, got phones with cameras that are out or not working?
I just had a, I just had a, right, let's say a week in the school, I had a new code put in that we had. And it was, I had some cameras that were out once we put that in and they re-signed the I U addresses. My cameras are not working, so that, that's been something we're looking at. I know, uh, with stuff that was out in the hallway during the, the year, because I have, uh, that was what we thought that it ended up just being a switch and I put it in twelve places. Cameras wise are going all right. Um, we went back and actually renamed the cameras while I had them there, so I had put specifically, uh, the location to, you know, to see, to, in case the safety emergency break through that. And that's my cameras.
Chief, does the state police have a, uh, capabilities for all of our schools?
They have the codes to access our systems in the schools to bring the cameras up on their cruisers, their emergency vehicles, uh, and their tactical command vehicles. We're in the process of getting nine-one-one to those codes so they can also access them for the fire departments. We're going to have to get them a separate code. We know that they were given, uh, codes that we know where they, they do get in the system who's in there. We really can't do, and then those cameras. And, and I, I'm not complaining about, there's cameras that are broken. Mr. Bowlin's working as hard as he can, I believe, to get them fixed. But I have cameras going down sometimes, it makes me wonder how they're going down.
Well, no, my question was, I know that he's spending a lot of time on cameras. I'm not disputing that, but some of the funding that we have here money wise, if they can be used for camera upgrades, that's a good place to put.
And our, and our camera system today is a hundred times better than when I came there twelve years ago. I mean, in fact, that we had seventy cameras total at the high school and, and they were all, they were bad. Uh, you know, the system we got today is, is working a whole lot better. And I think Mr. Bowlin's been working on getting it fine too. Again, it's, 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 it's a process when we put cameras in and then they come out with new cameras that are upgraded. And we've been upgrading some of them in our environmental areas. But, you know, we still have some areas that have cameras that we need to get them into. I, I, my feeling is almost every outside entranceway should have a camera on so we know who's coming in.
I agree.
And that, that would, would solve some of the problems.
I agree.
But again, we need to educate. And again, we've got kids that go to get a crash alarm off the way. That happens, it's going to happen in a public school. Every school this, in this county is dealing with it, okay? Union town, they're dealing with it because they got a alarm going off. They know when they look at the camera, it could push the door and now they're citing him for kicking open the door and, and, and they're cutting that out. We don't have that luxury right now. But, uh, you know, we need to educate the staff and the students that those doors need to remain locked and secure. Because that's our weakest point during the day. Side doors, back doors. I, I, I mean, I, you know, my feeling, nobody's coming in that front door after us unless he's got a cycle for all of them.
Are all those doors needed for access?
Well, no, but they, they, they were needed for emergencies to get out. And that's the problem, they all open out. And you can't secure and lock them because you may need them. And, 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 and you've got to remember, these schools were all built thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years ago and have been updated. And that's what they built is full systems back then. They're changing those systems today in their renovations in that period, they're upgrading the doors because the world we lived in thirty, forty, fifty years ago is not the same world we're living in today. However, if I was twenty years ago, I'd be working as a police examiner in a school district. We never run herd of, you know? But now, they're common, common everywhere. And there's more and more districts adding, you know? You know, but it's true, not only in the schools, it's true in public buildings, it's true everywhere. I mean, we live in a world that is totally changed from what it was 10 years ago.
See, WDU used to have a mag lock system, and all the doors were locked on the mag lock system. You have access far down in the building. And then during life safety issues, all the mag locks were held safe, the doors would open, people could exit. That might be something we'd like to look into also.
Chief, you have anything else?
Now, we're just, you know, frogging along there. We have had some payers for looking for jobs for, in the process, we're looking to get some people hired. We're still working short, but we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Thanks, Chief. Mrs. Bridgich, Special Agent?
Good evening, everybody, just a few things, I want to bring your attention. We had a webinar that we watched this past week on the changes that are coming through Department of Education for collaborations with our standardized tests. So the principals also are involved in that hearing, that webinar was mandated, the webinar followed us. And along with that, Department of Education also mandated that we went out for some access training, which I went to, happy thanks for that training, and Mrs. Sheets attended the training as well, down at the IU. A lot of things coming out through Department of Education right now. We had our LBD meeting, the first meeting of the year, kind of the 51, and Mrs. Dunham and I both attended that meeting. We set up some programs for our special education teachers on our Happy and Service Day. And among those trainings that we had was some functional behavior analysis training for our social workers. Mr. Mahoney came up from the IU, and we met with the social workers, had a very productive meeting with them. We did a refresher for the teachers on safety cares, which is like the safe restraint system that you might use in case of an emergency with a student that would become disruptive to the point where they might hurt themselves and others. And we also had a program through Michelle Bovon, and she's one of our school psychologists, and she did a very nice job of teaching our special needs teachers about an assessment called the RACT. It has to do with writing and reading at the elementary levels. And it also reviews the life skills students at the secondary level. And she ended all of these school psychologists actually do a program in different buildings during that day. We were looking into some work with the IU in terms of giving us some tips, more tips for us, more tools for our tool belt, in terms of behavior analysis. We actually sent a teacher out to training already, it's like one in a four-part series, just to bring some things back to us that, in some cases, is a refresher, but in some cases also is new information for our teachers. But I want to say that so far, the special education program in all of the schools for both Mrs. Dunham and myself, they've been really, the teachers have been on top of things, and we have new students coming in every day. A lot of them do come with IPs, and I want to say that the schools have really been on top of getting the students in, getting them activated, so we're very pleased with the start of the school year. Any questions?
Mrs. Bridgich, what, on your report, what is restorative justice, techniques of restorative justice?
Well, actually, that's a buzzword that's out there right now, and has to do a lot with like an anti-bullying campaign. There are programs out there that are CAN programs, the different vendors are trying to sell. And that's a word that's out there in terms of what you would do with a student who has had a problem in the schools, or a group of students that have had problems in the schools with respect to behavior, and how can you remediate them and bring your school back to like a social calmness.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mrs. Bridgich.
Thank you.
Let's see, Troy, group service?
Thank you. I did want to bring up a little bit, I see in your report, our breakfast program, especially at our middle schools, is overwhelming, overwhelming response. Middle school's doing well also, and our elementaries are holding their end okay. Breakfast participation is up 200 meals a day for the month of September, which is pretty amazing. With that, we've had some, I guess, the ground pains that we moved through, and we keep making adjustments to make sure we complete the demands of the new program. Equipment grants were sent in Friday for five more buildings. Equipment granted is available through the state. I had a gentleman from Rationale come out and make sure that what we were ordering would work in our buildings. And I also spoke to Mr. Cheslow, saying we were doing wrong on the same page as we applied for those grants. The only other thing I have, and I know I'll be speaking with Mr. Bowles as well, put this on the website. We are in need of subs for our cafeterias, so if any of you would like to apply, please stop by the business office to get that figured out.
Thank you. Troy, any questions for Troy?
Yeah, was there any cafeteria equipment from the old AL Wilson that we were, that we were able to use?
There was, we brought that over. I know there were some racks that we bought, and Mr. Cheslow had told me there was an oven.
There was a stack oven, a set of stack ovens. We took the mixer, we took, we actually took the garbage spud off.
And the separator.
The booster heater underneath the sink was shot, so we didn't take it. But we took about everything, anything that we reused.
Racks from the freezer.
Yeah, we got those, the racks.
Was there removable coolers and refrigerators and so forth that you could use?
No, man. Two walk-ins, they were built in.
But anything that we felt that we could use down the road, we did keep, and will replace as we need. Thank you, Troy.
Mr. Bowles, technology?
Hello, I don't have much outside that's outlined on my board report, just to piggyback off of the old AL Wilson building. We did a walk-through as well, and removed anything that we could. With the help of Mr. Cheslow, he was able to go in and remove, remove the door camera entry system that they had. And we're going to be looking to outfit that in a central office, to kind of, to go off of, you know, with the whole safety factor, you know, to give our ladies over there a little more, you know, sense of peace and calmness. So we're going to be looking to do that. Outside of that, I don't have anything else, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bowles?
Chris, I just thought a few earlier, tell the board about, do you have that line hooked up into the guidance counselor's office now?
Yes, to update what Mr. Dunn mentioned about the guidance counselors and the phone calls at the high school. We did some rerouting, the way the lines work, and the callback features. And from what I've seen, and the lack of what I've heard, it seems to be doing well. Mr. Hutchinson's not here to elaborate on that, but I haven't heard any further complaints, so I'm assuming all is well.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. See, Mr. Horn, transportation?
Thanks for telling everyone, very pleased with the start of the school in the transportation area. The new bus contractor is coming right along, getting online. Very pleased with the camera systems they're using. They have a four-camera system on our bus, and it's very high resolution. We've used it several times already, and I find it a very useful tool in helping the administration with dealing with student management issues. One question that had come up last week was about some of the mini buses that don't have the district name on. The reason for that is we got a new fleet of buses, as promised. However, the propane vehicles weren't ready for the start of school, so we have gas fleet buses we're running now until those propane buses come in. There was a problem with the factory, and they weren't able to get some sort of part of what it is, but I do have a letter on file from Collins, the manufacturer of the buses, saying that the delivery would start today or shortly thereafter on Tuesday. So still looking to have a convenient more fleet in near certain before Christmas. And then we have fully operational propane fleet. But other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
I have a question, so who's paying for the diesel fuel with these extra buses we're using?
It's a great question. Actually, there's not much reason being used. However, we have an agreement with SDA, since our price for the fuel that you're aware is a dollar five-five for the propane, we're going to pay a dollar five-five towards the diesel. And then anything over that amount is going to be absorbed by SDA until the buses arrive. And I've already talked to the bookkeeper, and Mrs. Sheets talked that issue.
Bill, I got a phone call from a lady in Kerrchamp, where he would reroute her route for her daughter, and they just moved there. She said she had called, I don't know if you've filed it. I was trying to look up her name here.
Is it State Street?
I think it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I talked to her.
Please don't mention name, go ahead. Did you talk to her about the lady?
Yes.
All right. Can we redo that again, or have you looked at that?
Yeah, they live two houses from her bus stop, but I can, I admit, us didn't have the bus go up that street without...
Well, the way they had talked though, is at the beginning of the year, it did go down past there, and then it got stopped, it got rerouted.
I'm not certain we're talking about the same stop, but it might be something that you'd want to talk to me about, if you find your notes.
Okay.
If it's not State Street, if it is State Street, I'd be worried about it.
I can talk, I'll look it up if I have the address.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Horn? Thank you, Bill. Under other administrative, the Pennsylvania Safe Schools Conference in Harrisburg, December 11th and 12th. I would like to, Mr. Hutchinson and myself, to attend that conference. It's PVE's conference, with being Act 44, being a new administrator and everything, you know, coming to districts through safe schools, I think this would be a very worthwhile conference for Mr. Hutchinson to attend. I believe the conference itself, there's no cost in the conference, there wouldn't be a stay or a cost for the hotel and travel for that conference. So that's something I would like to get on the agenda, with the boards in agreement, to send us to that conference. Board, would that be fine?
Yeah, that's a very worthwhile conference.
And I mentioned already about the $25,000 grant that was awarded out of Galveston. Some of that money was spent in the fiscal year. We may have a couple, $4,000 left of that money to put toward additional metal detectors and hand锄ts and so forth. And we, the sale of old AL Wilson, is that public, or is that... It was a, it was a public auction, so we discussed it. Okay, if there's anything in particular, you do have the government, you do have the ability, if you wish, to discuss it executive, but I don't think there's probably anything, okay, to discuss. The successful bid for the, for AL Wilson and the property that it's situated on was $62,500 with a 10% buyer's premium. So the district will get the full $62,500. That buyer's premium obviously is paid by the buyer to the auction company. And the vacant lot adjacent to the front of AL Wilson, that went to the highest bidder for $30,000. And once again, there was a 10% buyer's premium that the buyer would pay for the auction. As a reminder, the only cost we would have to pay Pal would be for advertising, if the board chooses to opt to accept the bids.
Mr. Page, would you make clear about that, that the whole episode about the dates being wrong, that was not only district, that was done by the auctioneer?
Yeah, the auction, the auctioneer company actually sent me an email, an ad was sent out to everybody, and they never did give the answer, it's the how it got messed up with the fan living jerk.
But it had nothing to do with our product?
No.
Okay, that's why I want to make clear to the public, because on Facebook data, that was not made clear to them.
My question for that too is, is the school code specifically requires that we advertise in the little journal three weeks prior to, if that advertisement had the wrong date, are we really satisfying the school code?
Yeah, the reason why I recommended you go through with the auction was because even after the auction, the board has the ability to accept or reject the bid that occurred at the auction. My opinion, although the ad contained the wrong date and location of the auction, in the little journal, it was correct in the error standard, which is also required to bid. If I may, it was also advertised in the Tribune Review and the Observer Reporter, as well as the error standard. So, yeah, to me, the issue became, was this creating confusion? And potential bidders lost out. My understanding is that the Monday question, which was the day before the auction, that Joe Powell had people at old AL and at new AL, in fact, I think one of them was Mr. Page himself. And at new AL, which was the wrong address for the auction, nobody showed up. And at old AL, one person did show up, they were told that, "Come back tomorrow for the auction." And the person said they really weren't there to bid, they were just wanting to watch what was going on. I think they used the word net nose, didn't they? Anybody who wanted to call in, because that was permitted, they had to go through Joe Powell. And if they were calling in on Monday, they were told, "No, call in tomorrow if you wish to bid." So I guess what I'm saying is, if you guys think this is a good price, I'm not sure you want to pass it up for what I believe was an error that was corrected. They took precautions and solved it.
On a slightly different note, tonight was the first night that I heard that there had ever been discussion or plans about possibly putting a baseball field where the stadium park was. So, no...
No, that's the new one.
I'm new to it.
The new one, we're, we're part of State, we're with that.
Okay. So how many acreage, area, how many acres do you need to have baseball fields?
About five acres.
Anybody have the area of the park?
Just for, just a little FYI.
We're trying to force that out the middle.
Just a little FYI, FYI, I just want to tell each note, with this, what we got for this building, what they had, having had a discuss for, we received about 7%. For a previous building that we did in a different way, we actually received, for what it was discussed at, 8%.
But nobody can dispute this as a public progress to the public?
Right, just, just a little information.
The bottom line is, it's up to whatever you, as a board, want to do, if it requires five yes posts. We go to minus $2,000. Yes, because that's what the deed is going to reflect. That buyer's premium is not going to be on the deed, because you don't want to pay a transfer tax on that extra $6,200 that's been done.
And this money will go into our general fund? If it's not even our current, you know, what's on, is that...
Go ahead, let me check something, but I just don't trust the firm.
We've always wanted that. Yeah, we've always wanted that, that, that. I mean, it's terrible, I mean, it's terrible, our research.
Was there plans, or there's some management plan for being called out?
No, we never got that one, because we're not in the front.
I don't have it with me, I had written a memo to Denise about that. I can't recall whether it goes to the general fund, or it has to go to the capital improvements or debt service. But it's your fault. If you put it towards debt service, that frees up something, I'd use debt service to keep in the general.
I suppose we... I agree with you.
I do.
Would you like to add that to the agenda for Wednesday to vote on accepting or rejecting the bid offer?
Yes.
Okay.
This is how it works. I mean, don't get upset if you want, but $110,000 that's remaining in capital projects, enough to build a ball field at the land?
Oh, oh.
I mean, it seems fundamentally unfair that we would have all these other, you know, football fields, softball fields, so forth, and not have something for our baseball. And so, I mean, I don't know what it would cost, because that's something that we should consider.
I agree with that. However, we are dealing with security. We're dealing with security and safety. Because I would like nothing other than to build a baseball field.
Well, that's my question. Is it $100,000, is it $200,000, or is it $600,000? It's something that we have.
They just talked.
I don't really think about $100,000. See, if you can find the property to do it.
So there's a chance that we could still spend a substantial amount of money in addition to what we've already spent on security and consider a baseball field?
We have parents in this district that have raised more money and spent more money on security than what we have spent out of the bond issue.
I agree with Mr. Dunham, the security of the safety of the property.
I agree.
But however, at the AL Wilson that we have right now, the new AL Wilson. Now, I know the gentleman said he bought the property across where the railroad tracks. Now, we backed there. But I, it was my understanding, we did purchase that, that there was enough property.
Yeah, there's enough.
There's enough property. I would say there was a lot of it reached.
Yeah, there used to be a ball field back there years ago.
So I mean, you know, down the road, instead of, you know, having to donate. I believe that there, that was one of the reasons that we were looking ahead at that too, to be able to put a baseball field.
Yeah.
Well, because he just said it's something.
If that was what I could get, that'd be great. Probably still love to have a get.
I understand, but it's still, it's still better. It's still better than jumping.
Jumping around and playing.
Yeah, so that's something that's unby our.
And you said there was a ball field back there, Jeff?
Yeah, there was. Years ago, yeah.
There's some sand back there. I have, I have the original prints from Al Wilson, where there's an old park that's still in the track. I have.
Yeah, I, you know, Mr. Bowles, he was on the internet, you know? And that's one of the reasons we were, you know, it was all working out.
The board's real work.
So how much would it cost to get some kind of a better understanding of what it costs to put a ball field in?
Well, we have engineering.
Well, he said he had K2 across the road for him, because he wanted to do this. And things that was not, something was not.
Is it lovely?
It's, it's.
It's grown up. The other thing I can tell you is, my experience at other school districts, when it comes to a baseball field, the cost is all an ass devotion, whether it's level and.
Drain.
They don't generally put a lot of money into stands and.
Well, there is that. There is a creek that runs there, but it runs in front of what he's talking about. I would probably go to one of his parks.
Let's see what we can get done with the security, and we'll do a study on it.
And we had to see how long we could pass, but into 2019, before we do anything.
I think that's it. We will have a brief break before we go into executive session. I believe we have an extension for lack of watering or stamping. Not those student act, and the student act, student confidentiality.